Things that you give us on a daily basis, many times we don't appreciate as we look back over each week. Thank you for what you've done. Thank you for our school. Thank you to those that lead our children in learning. Thank you for our churches idolated. Thank you for the industry. And we could go on and on. We really feel like we're not worthy. Thank you for you. Let's keep blessed this meeting today, meaningful to you also to those of you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Before the roll call, I'd like to welcome the sheriff, Sheriff Lawson, and also Dr. Cash at the school system. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater, Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes, Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
It's twelve present and two absent.
Thank you very much. Entertained a motion for the approval of the minutes. Second, Goins on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor, none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you. Well, now go to the mayor for the report from the county mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I had written down here no report, and then Crystal walked in with a resolution that I'd forgot about. That's coming around. Has everyone got a copy of it yet? While it's coming on around, I'll read the most important thing. This is nothing new, except Cleveland State is kind of wanting it more official, I guess you would say, this year. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Cleveland State Community College for enrollment of Bradley County first responders and Cleveland State's Community College's paramedic AEMT and EMT programs for a term of three years. This is something we've been doing for the last three years, but they've got it more formalized this year. So they have a memorandum of understanding for me to sign, and since it's multi-year, I'm asking for your all's approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll place that.
Motion to made by Commissioner Rogers to have a second. Second by Commissioner Winters, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and that's all I have tonight. I believe everything else is on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to the consent agenda to entertain a motion. Goins on the motion, second on Winters. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Twelve in favor and none opposed, and two absent.
Reports from the committees and or districts will start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item. My boss lady that I worked with at Tospetal last Tuesday mentioned to me that her ditches needed to be mowed out on Bates Pike and Kenzel Road. So I called Bobby Long, and the next day I got a phone call from her. I told her that I'd done it, and then the next day, after working all day, I got a phone call from her about five o'clock, five thirty, telling me that the bush hogs were coming up Bates Pike, mowing the ditches. So I said all that to say this, a thank you to those guys at the road department for their excellent job that they do. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason.
Nothing to note, Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district doing well. No, not the report. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I got a couple of things here. One thing anyway that I'd like to read off here. I was listening at the finance committee today on my phone, and y'all talked about the property out at the fire station on Minus Road. First of all, the mistake was made that before that it was four hundred feet, which it's not, it's two hundred feet by thirty-two feet. About thirty-two feet.
Oh, you're my Goins.
That's all. Behind the new fire station, fire hall. This was a request by the land and building committee to be sent to the finance committee after we got a quote on the cost of removing the trees and dirt and sloping the bank back to the property line. For some reason, I would like to answer as why this was tabled at the finance committee. We got a problem with tabling things. What you want to table it for, once you bring it, send it to the finance committee like it was requested by the building and land. If these committees don't mean anything to you, then you don't need to be asking them. You don't need to have them. And again, it was for two hundred foot and thirty-two foot, not four hundred by thirty-two. This was seventy-five thousand dollars and not a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The quote was asked, and why the fire, if the fire department knew about this, this question should not be asked there. We've got fourteen commissioners up here that make a decision. I don't know why you want to go out there and ask the fire department why you do a project like that. And yeah, that's the reason we're up here to make that decision. It should have not been tabled. It should have gotten a quote and given finance and find the revenue. That's what the finance committee's for, isn't it, Mr. Chairman of the finance? Now that it is tabled, the finance now has to go back and untable it. This is why we have committees to make recommendations to the commission. And I don't know why that this wasn't followed through with, and it needs to be followed through with and not tabled. And when you table something, you've got to take it off. You've got to figure a way to take it off the table and start all over again. So, uh, somebody give me an answer why it wouldn't send back to finance like we recommended it. Nobody knows. Well, I tell you, no, because nobody cares. I don't guess you care about any of these committees. Well, just sit there. I don't care. But anyway, I got what I wanted to say out. Thank you.
Commissioner Gilbert.
I'd just like to, Judge Donaghy, I went to the court the other day for the veterans, and you talking about one thing our money goes for that's really doing good. There was a couple gentlemen there that had been in our program for quite a few, quite a while. And let me tell you, it was amazing. This one guy gave a speech, and it's about like a country song, turn around, went backwards. He got everything back. Got his house back, his kids back, his job back. This young man, I mean, he had been through heck, and to find out that he had PSD. And, you know, a lot of our veterans come home from war and don't know what's going on with them, but this is the thing that happens to them. I think this court is one of the most important courts, drug court, and it is to give these guys a second chance, and I think it was amazing court. Ms. Donaghy does an amazing job at it. I mean, it's just beautiful to watch her work. And why can't every day be like Bradley County School little party they had? That was the most amazing party, the most fun I've had on this commission since I've been here. I mean, it was just absolutely grand. I mean, everybody had a wonderful time. Dr. Cash, don't stop that. Don't stop what you're doing. It means a lot to these teachers, and listen, they enjoyed theirselves, and it was wonderful. And that's going to be all for me, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Winters, please.
Let me jump on that statements that have been made by Commissioner Gilbert. If you were unable to go to this in-service training, that was an event you missed out. It was, I'm an old school principal. I've seen a lot of meetings where you call them in-service, and you'd want to get out the door when you get there the first hour. This is, you were there three hours and you didn't want to leave. Every school was enthused. Every school was excited. They wore their school colors. They celebrated. Each school celebrated just being together, and it was so well organized for three hours that it gave us one break and got us back together. But the way that is was mission possible. The mission as students, the mission was building a culture where students want to come to school. It just was tremendous the way they presented it. Dr. Cash presented a tremendous oration of what the purpose of a classroom teacher was and how everybody take that student that needed special care and be that special person. It couldn't have been better. My partner to the right here was in charge of moving people in and moving them out, and they did such a great job. Everybody that was there felt so, they just didn't want it to be over, but they also didn't want to go back to school and go back to work, I'm sure, and all of that. But we are blessed with our school system. Cleveland Middle's right beside me. They had their meetings today. Kids were in school today. We've got great school systems, but it's great people that are in there, and from the top down, each person there were engaged and did a super job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All is well in the third.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things. I want to jump on that. That was a lot of fun. When you start off with a big bang like that, you get a lot of momentum. Hope it carries you all the way to May of next year, and I'm sure it will. That was a lot of fun. Couple of things here, Mr. Chairman, then we'll get into some motions here. Finance committee did meet today. One of the things that we chatted about was the opioid timeline. Just to bring you up to speed, we don't have to make a motion on this, but basically we'll start that process so they can get everything in and have everything ready by the beginning of the year. So next month invitations, then October interviews, then in November, recommendation back to the full commission for their grant awards and have everything ready by the beginning of the year. So just keep you up to speed on that. Next, the veteran court, I hate that I missed. I was at the last veteran court ceremony, the graduation. Commissioner Gilbert, and I agree with you. It's well, well, what's the word I've been looking for? Organized. Judge Donaghy's pretty straight with her words. She let them know the rules, the boundaries, but she also was there to help them. What I found interesting is that they have veterans who are mentors to those who are going through that court. So I hated that I missed. I had a schedule conflict. I wasn't been there. And I definitely appreciate those who come back home and who need help and get the help when they need it. Next, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee met earlier today and voted on a number of recommendations. First, the committee voted to recommend authorizing the reconciliation of liability accounts in a closing forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents from the county liability account to the county fund balances of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This is a housekeeping item. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation in the form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Winters, open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, the committee voted to recommend approving a corrected copy of Resolution twenty-five, twenty-three, making appropriations to various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Bradley County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. You have a hard copy of the corrected resolutions, which basically corrects the typographical area. Mr. Chairman, I place this in the form of motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second on Commissioner Rogers. Open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Thompson, you know I have the utmost respect for you. Like you run your committee. When a member of your committee makes a motion and gets a second, you have an obligation to take that up and proceed with it, and that's all I did as chair of finance today. A member made a motion, it got seconded, and that's what happened here. But, so I have also, the rules require that committees, whenever something is voted, bring it to the full commission. So that wasn't the final decision. It's just a recommendation to the full commission, which is what I'm about to do. But before I do, Crystal, I would like to ask you a quick question, a point of clarification. I don't think we've ever had a table come out of a committee. So should it, the table pass when I make the motion? What is the ramifications, or if it fails, what happens there? Because I think this is new territory for us.
I would, I think so, yeah. I would agree that it is, yes. It would be, in my opinion, it is a recommendation to table, so that is the recommendation that's coming to this body. If it gets a second, it would be voted on. As you all know, with tabling, there is no discussion. If the motion fails, it would go back to finance as though it didn't pass. So to be placed back on your agenda for further discussion or other action that may be taken. If the tabling passes, though, then that action would be approved and it would be tabled.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, the committee considered a request from the building and land committee to fund the clearing, leveling, and graveling paving of the fire facility property located on Minus Road. At an estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand, Mayor Davis noted that the scope of the project had been reduced to a two hundred by three thirty strip, which would reduce the estimated cost. The committee voted three to one with one absent to table the building and land committee request to fund the clearing, level, and graveling paving of the fire facility property located on Minus Road. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation in form of motion. May I please add, Mr. Chairman, the procedure does not allow discussion on the motion to table. Thank you.
Have a second. Had a second from Commissioner Alford, open for discussion. No, no, no discussion. I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Goins.
No.
Mason.
No.
Ledford.
No.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
No.
Beatty.
No.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? It's five in favor, seven opposed, and two absent.
Goes back to finance, right? Okay. Is that all you had, sir?
Right now, but if you would, when we get further on down the meeting, we may, here's the issue. Mayor Davis, let me bring you in on this a little bit. Finance doesn't schedule the meeting until first week of September. We, and I know the mayor mentioned this today, he needs some direction. Well, you don't need direction too, but he needs to know what this commission wants. So if this is coming back to finance, and that's what's going to happen, then I need to get with Lori in the morning and come up with a time for everybody way before that, because we can't wait, Mayor, till, it's not emergency, but.
Yeah, ideally, what he's talking about is I've explained that we needed a decision one way or the other because the other two projects are on hold. The concreting of the new parking lot as well as the building project, so.
Well, I mean, I don't know if this is allowed or not. I mean, what finance has asked to do, and I agree with Commissioner Thompson, I was just waiting until it got to me before I answered. I wasn't trying to be funny. Is where could we get the money? A hundred and fifty thousand or seventy thousand, whatever, seventy-five. And there's really, there's one thing I know for sure. There is not enough money in the fire fund, in Fund One Twenty-One or One Twenty-E. Basically, the fire fund. You can't, the only two places that we have that kind of capital is in the art money, the federal money, which we've been using over the last, what, three or four years, and One Eighty-Nine. So. I guess there are some, I mean, those are the only two places. And my recommendation, I guess, if we're going to do this, is to use art money first, because we're, but this, I will say this. If we use art money, this is about the last thing we can use art money for. It's down to thousands now, plus what was budgeted, and we've kind of, you have a little bit of interest coming in. I actually got the report today from the trustee's office. I mean, interest, it used to be around seventy thousand. It's now barely over twenty thousand a month in interest. So that means, and I know VEC just sent their request for funding for their broadband that's going out in the sixth district and all that kind of stuff. So if we do use art money for this, it's pretty much the last thing that we can use it for. The other pot of money would be One Eighty-Nine. So it's up to this commission if you want to take that. If not, then finance will, I'll get with Lori tomorrow and come up with a day and schedule it sometime this week so that Mayor doesn't have to wait. But then if we come up with something, we have two weeks until the next one. So I just trying to keep it going, Mayor. I don't know what else to do.
And also, just for y'all to consider, the One Eighty-Nine fund, every dollar you take out of it means you're going to have to borrow that much sooner for your next school project you approve. I know you've not approved yet, but you're going to. The plan is to stretch that out as long as possible before we don't have to borrow till we just have to. So every dollar you take out's moving that closer. And on the other one, next year's budget with no ARP, look at the things that you've been funding with ARP. One ongoing thing every year is cop cars, a hundred thousand dollars for cop cars. When you spend that down and you don't have it this time next year for the next budget, you're going to have to find it in the general fund, and it wasn't there this year. Doubt that it'll be there next year. So I'm just trying to get you to think ahead of what's coming when you spend money that you don't have to spend. Because there's things coming up you're going to have to. Steve's been told by utilities and ECD of another project that's probably going to cost a hundred thousand dollars. That's going to have to be done at some point. You spend it all, you're not going to have any when those things come up, and then on the One Eighty-Nine, you're going to have to borrow sooner than my long-range plan is to borrow. You've done that on a project already, and now you're about to do it on another one, so that's the ramifications of what you're doing, is all I'm saying.
And that's kind of what I was trying to articulate. I mean, so.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to clear up a little bit about how this came about. This whole thing came about as us commissioners went out to their, to the fire hall to look at what had already been done and that it was ready in time to start pouring, right? That's why we went out there and looked. And all of us commissioners, quite a few of them, I'm not going to name nobody's name, but we stood out there and understood that you couldn't get the fire truck where they put the two pins at, where the two markers was. But they went back out there and they cut some more of that off, and then went several feet more back, and then they cut a bank, right, Mayor?
Yes. What he's referring to is they did move some things. Charlotte got with the Cleveland people and said, hey, this isn't right, because we do have some issues, and they've done some moving of the building. Plus, they've still got some more dirt work to do on the bank. It's not ready to pour, and that's what he's talking about. But it will be before they pour. The turning in of the truck, I'm assured by everyone involved, won't be a problem once that is corrected.
So from the point where they dug back to that bank, they're actually going to go back a little bit further, right?
Yeah, I think she asked them to go back a little farther. It wasn't, from the beginning, it's supposed to be straight with the existing bank, and it wasn't exactly. And then it started curving before you got to the corner, so they were told to go back farther. Not a whole lot farther, but mainly to straighten it up. And then with the repositioning of the building, that gave the radius that was needed for the truck, because the agreement with the city all along has been is there will be a turning radius for this ladder truck. And it didn't appear to be there at the time the committee was out there looking at it. That's not been corrected yet, but they've agreed to correct it.
So that part's going to, they've agreed to correct that one line and turn out. It actually would be shorter than what we're talking, the thirty-foot. If they go out there and clear, straighten that out, and then turn and clear that corner out, that will be a little more shorter than what we was talking.
Yeah, when Commissioner Thompson mentioned thirty-two feet, today I used the figure two hundred by thirty feet.
Right.
Because there'll be a little bit more shaved off, but it's approximately two hundred by thirty feet. I personally haven't measured it, but that's what I've been told, and I think that's what you all said from your committee, too. And that's, and I also informed them, Howard, that instead of a hundred and fifty, it would be more like up to half of that, the seventy-five. So they were looking at the smaller project and the smaller amount. It didn't start out that way, but that was in the discussion.
But I just want to make it clear that us commissioners went out there, that was the reason we had went out there, was to look because they said it was ready, and it wasn't ready. And like he said, Charlotte had to have them to take some more dirt off of it, and to the point to where they're at, it would be nice if it could be all the way back to the property line. But, hmm, but that's the number one thing. I just wanted to clear up how we come to this point. And the meeting we was out there was thinking maybe to cost thirty more thousand dollars to go from that point back out, the two hundred feet. It'd be seventy-five thousand. I don't, but what you've got's just an estimate, right? You haven't got bids, right?
No, I can't bid it till it's funded, but I had original estimates on the total project, and then your all's meeting or the building and land meeting last week said approximately half of it, and that's why I cut the estimate in half. But we can't bid it. I can't get you a concrete number until I have funding in place to bid it. But it would, if you were approving it, it would be approving something up to seventy-five thousand or whatever, and that way that would give me the authority to move forward with bidding it.
So where we go from there, that's more dirt that they've got to take out and less that we would have to take out, and I don't know where you go from that point.
Did all you had?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blake.
Yep, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Alford, please. Yes, sir.
Good before it drops.
Right.
Second district doing well. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Looking for a.
Some motion.
Motion. Got a second. Commissioner Mason on the second, and open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yeah, I guess.
Twelve in favor and none opposed, and two absent.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Alford.
Yes, sir. This is a resolution authorizing Bradley County Mayor to enter into a master service and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprise. master service and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated, an initial term of five years with an optional additional five years extended term to continue to provide body, body worn cameras, fleet cameras, digital evidence management, taser and accessories camera system, and for the interview, interview rooms and drone services at the Bradley County Sheriff's Office, uh, office of the total amount of, for ten years, of two million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I place that in form of a motion, sir.
Second, Commissioner Winters, open for discussion? Call the roll, please.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
It's twelve in favor and none opposed and two absent.
Thank you. Communication from the audience, please. Give you five minutes. Somebody's got something to say, Mike.